The April 7th, lighting, programming and zoning commission. I entertain a motion on the April 7th agenda.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same side. The approval of the meeting, approval of the minutes of the regular meetings as well as the special meeting.
I move that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting of February 3rd, 2015, and the special meeting on March 24th, 2015.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Financial report.
This is Anderson with staff. Before you have the, before you have the February 2015 budget performance report, so this goes through 2/28/15. As you recall, we're a month behind in our reporting due to what it takes for them to calculate it up for the first Tuesday of every month. So this puts us at 66% of the year. As you can see, the first part of the page talks about our revenues. We're at 46%. A large part of that is property sales, which we're obviously working on continuously to get those up. We are below 66% in our expenses at 61% for salaries and the majority of the budget. Really right around that 66% mark for the majority of the rest of the information there, or a little ways above or below it because some things are paid in advance. So we're right on track for the year.
Any questions? We'll receive and place the report on file.
So move.
Oral presentations. Do we need a motion on that? Okay. Seeing no oral presentations, we'll move to new business.
Maybe we should have Suflans say it in the words.
Oh yes.
I was gonna say, officially, I probably should abstain from voting on anything I have no recollection of, so if you need to put an abstention on there. But no, I'm excited. Mike filled me in on this, and I used to work for the city years ago, so know a little bit about it. So I'm just looking forward to working with a couple people at the Irish State. This was very helpful and informational, and I would recommend any new member going to that. That was really good. So that's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This time, the time is 4:04 PM, and the hearing is scheduled at this time. Request by Nicole Cook to rezone 4.43 acres from A1 agricultural district to R2, one and two family residential districts for the purpose of constructing one new, one new single-family home generally located east of 920 Southview Drive. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating, "I, Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter and aerial photos were mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on March 25th, 2015." And I have a motion to receive and place this notice on file.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Staff report.
This is Miller with staff. The proposed rezon area is located east of land that is currently zoned R2, one and two residence, family residence district. The applicant would like the area to be rezoned to construct a new single-family dwelling. The area in question is currently zoned A1 agricultural district. To the north, there is, it is zoned A1 agricultural district, and it is currently farmland. To the east, it is M2P planned industrial district and is currently farmland. To the south, it is A1 agricultural district and also farmland. And to the west, it is R2, one and two family residence district and is single-family homes and also vacant land. There are no areas of the site in question are located within the floodplain according to FEMA maps. The applicant is requesting to rezon 4.43 acres from A1 agricultural district to R2, one and two family residence district for the purpose of constructing one new single-family home. The applicant has indicated that the home will be constructed on the highest elevation of the property. Access to the property will be gained off of Country View Street, and city engineering, the city engineering department will allow for access off of Country View Street, as long as a portion of Country View Street to be utilized will be seal-coated on top of a six-inch rock gravel base with a hammerhead turnaround for emergency vehicles. Sanitary and storm sewer lines are not located adjacent to the parcel in question and will have to be extended by the applicant in order to accommodate the new home. The applicant will also have the option of installing self-sufficient utilities for the home. Therefore, staff recommends that the request, request to rezon approximately 4.43 acres from A1 agricultural district to R2, one and two family residence district for the purpose of constructing one new single-family home be approved for the following reasons. It would appear that the rezoning of the land to R2, one and two family residence district would not have a negative impact on the surrounding area. The request is located within the primary growth area. The request would be in conformance with the future land use map and comprehensive plan for the area. Subject to the following conditions, that the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, et cetera, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, drainage, et cetera, and two, a seal-coated 24-foot wide approach will need to be constructed with a six-inch, six-inch rock gravel base. A hammerhead turnaround will also need to be constructed at the north end of Country View Street to approach to accommodate for emergency vehicles.
Thank you. Do I have to read this?
No.
Okay. We have no one in the audience, so thanks for staff report. We have discussion amongst the commission.
Move to close the public hearing.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor of closing the public hearing at this time?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
So I have a question.
Yeah?
Is it time for questions?
Yes.
This is Thornsberry. So, I need a little education between when the people choose R1 and when they choose R2 as the zoning. I noticed that the ones around this particular one are R2, but the next one we're gonna hear is an R1. So, Mr. Eric. Size of house and lot and I don't know.
This is Schrader with staff. The R1 and the R2 are pretty similar. They have the same uses that are permitted, which is primarily single-family homes and two-family homes. The difference is lot size. The R1 is a little bit bigger lot size, a little bit bigger lot width, and a little bit bigger setback requirements. It, I don't know that it would really matter too much one way or the other, what it was rezoned, R1 or R2 would not make a significant difference in this area. We have some residential areas of the city that are zoned R1, some that are zoned R2, and it's, it's just kind of about that slightly larger, you know, lot size, lower density requirement essentially, so.
So on these four, almost four and a half acres, they could've chosen to go with R1, which would've designated a bigger lot size for that particular.
Yes, I think it was staff's suggestion based on surrounding zoning, you know, the closest adjacent residential zoning is R2.
Right, right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. No further discussion. Ready for motion.
I move that we approve the request to rezon approximately 4.43 acres from A1 agricultural district to R2, one and two family residence district for the purpose of constructing one new single-family home be approved for the following reasons. It is, appears that the rezoning of the land would not have a negative impact in the surrounding area. The request is located in the primary growth area. The request would be in conformance with the future land use map and comprehensive plan for the area. However, subject to the following conditions. One, that the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, et cetera, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, and drainage, et cetera. And two, a seal-coated 24-foot wide approach will need to, will be constructed with a six-inch rock gravel base. A hammerhead turnaround will be constructed at the north end of the county view, of county view appro, of the county view approach to accommodate emergency vehicles.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry, discussion.
I have a question, Gustafson. The hammerhead turnaround, is that the responsibility of the homeowner, or is that something that the city will do?
This is Anderson with staff. That would be the responsibility of the homeowner as the developer of the land.
Thank you.
Further discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same side. The time is 4:12 PM, and the hearing is scheduled at this time. Request by Elliot Carme to rezon 0.48 acres from A1 agricultural district to R1, one and two family residence for the continue, for the continued use of the property as a single-family home generally located at 174 West Airline Highway. At this time, we should receive and place on file a state, a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating, "I, Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter and aerial photos were mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on March 25th." And I have a motion to receive and place the notice on file.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Staff report.
This is Miller with staff. The proposed rezon area is located near the corner of West Airline Highway and Logan Avenue. The applicant would like to rezon the parcel in order to allow for reconstruction of a residence. The area in question is currently zoned A1 agricultural district. Areas to the north are R1, one and two family residence district and our single-family homes. To the east, it is A1 agricultural district and also single-family homes. To the south, it is C1 commercial district, vacant land. And to the west, it is R1, one and, and single-family homes. No areas of the site in question are located within the floodplain area. The applicant is requesting to rezon 0.48 acres of land from A1 agricultural district to R1, one and two family residence district in order to reconstruct a new residence on the property. The A1 district does allow for a residence to be constructed if there was a residence on the property when the zoning ordinance was adopted in 1969. In this instance, the current residence was built in 1947, so a new home could be constructed without requiring a rezon, but the applicant would like to rezon the property to have it to be consistent with adjoining properties to the west and north that are currently zoned R1, one and two family residence district. The single-family homes to the north and west that are zoned R1, one and two family residence district were rezoned in 1977 to allow for the construction of new homes in that area. At that time, the area in question was already developed and did not require a rezon. Therefore, staff recommends that the request to rezon approximately 0.48 acres of land from A1 agricultural district to R1, one and two family residence district be approved for the following reasons. The rezon request does not appear to have a negative impact on the area. The rezon would be in conformance with the future land use map designated, designation of low-density residential, and the request would allow for uniformity to zoning in the area.
Thank you. Yeah, we're going here. Do you have any discussion? Commission?
This is Thornsberry. I have a question. So, help me understand why this one sentence was stuck in there. Staff is aware there are horses on a number of the properties within the area.
This is Anderson with staff. When we met with the property owners to talk about a larger rezoning, a number of them noted that they wanted to keep their own individual land zoned agricultural because of the horses that they have out there. We did explain to them that horses are a permitted use in the residential district as well. We just wanted to make that aware, since that was a big point that they wanted to point out to the commission, as to why they were opposed to us moving ahead with rezoning of the rest of the land.
Okay.
Do I entertain a motion to close the hearing?
So move, please.
Second?
Second.
All in favor of closing the hearing? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Carries. Do we have any further discussion?
I'd like to move then that we go ahead and approve the rezon of 0.483 acres of land from A1 agricultural district to R1, one and two family resident district be approved. It appears that the rezon is not going to have a negative impact on the area. The rezon would also be in conformance with the future land use map designated for low-density residential, and the request would also allow for uniformity in the current zoning of that area of Waterloo.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same side. The time is now 4:17. The hearing is scheduled at this time. Request by the city of Waterloo to rezon 3.8 acres from A1 agricultural district to R1, one and two family residence for the continued use of the properties as single-family homes located at 138, 150, 162, and 168 West Airline Highway. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating, "I, Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter and aerial photos were mailed to each individual on the attached list by, by regular mail on March 25th, 2015." Can we entertain a motion to receive and place on file?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Motion carries.
I have a question. Has this been withdrawn or?
Yeah. Do we need to go through staff report with it being withdrawn? Request says it's been withdrawn. Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Read action by them to, since we actually should have mailed.
This is Schrader with staff. Oftentimes, we'll have it pulled from the agenda ahead of time. We had already mailed out notice to property owners, which is why we thought we would leave it on the agenda. So I guess I'm not sure if procedurally any action is needed at this time, other than staff's note that the item is withdrawn.
Can I just ask a question, point of order? Why does the city need to come to its own entity to ask for this change?
So if the city wants to rezon it, why do we have to come to the commission, you mean? Because it's still a procedural, it's, it's followed by state code. So state code requires any rezoning of land to go to the planning commission and then to the city council. It's to give, you know, obviously residents more input as to any actions by the city, a little more transparency. And again, like Eric said, the reason we, we didn't just take it off the agenda was because we had mailed it out to all of them. We met with two property owners that came to the meeting, and so we wanted to make sure in case someone was here that they were aware of, we were withdrawing the request, so they didn't just show up and it wasn't on the agenda. So we wanted to go ahead and have it and show them we're withdrawing.
So is this permanently withdrawn? You're, you're not gonna pursue with it?
We are not unless there's a request by them.
Okay.
Page 18 in our packets. Request by BCS Properties LLC for the one-lot plat of Ridgeway Gulf minor plat located at 1850 West Ridgeway Avenue.
This is Graham with staff. The applicant's proposing to plat 3.128, 125 acres into one lot, zone C2 commercial district that would be utilized for the construction of a new multi-tenant commercial building. This property is located along the north side of West Ridgeway Avenue between Highway 63 and West Forest Street. West Ridgeway Avenue and West Forest Street are classified as minor arterials, and then Highway 63 to the west is a principal arterial. Traffic operations has noted a potential concern for the development of land in this section of Ridgeway Avenue due to its current setup as a four-lane 45 mile an hour roadway without left turn lanes and/or signals. The impact of the new development and continued future development may require the need for new safety-related traffic improvements to be warranted in the future. Zoning history on the property, a 176 by 275 foot area directly to the east was rezoned from R2 CZ to C2 back in 2013 in order to market this property for commercial development. And then also, just recently, the commission might remember, a 100 by 275 foot area was just rezoned back in March from A1 to C2 to accommodate that exist, that proposed commercial building that was encroaching into that A1 land just to the west. There is a small portion of the piece of property that will be platted that is within the 100-year floodplain. However, it would appear that no building or any of the other construction components would be within that area shown in the floodplain. There are, there is a sanitary sewer line that will run across a portion of the front of this property, and it would also include the area where the sign is located that they show on the site plan, that they turned in to staff. The sign location will need to be adjusted, and an easement will need to be retained for the sanitary sewer line that runs near that south property line. The applicant is looking to plat this one lot for that commercial property, the commercial, multi-commercial tenant. It's for one lot, although it does contain four existing parcels. By plating the land, two of those four parcels would not have any street frontage. Therefore, staff would require that wording be included in the deed of dedication, which does show that those parcels do have ingress and egress capabilities. The plat does show an existing ingress, egress easement that was utilized by the existing driving range and golf course. There is a proposed sanitary sewer line, which I just mentioned, which will be located, which would be located within West Ridgeway Avenue. However, it would be located very close to that south property line. This easement would also be needed by the property owners further to the west as well. Also, the plat will cause one parcel to become completely landlocked, as it wouldn't have any street access, and another parcel would only have access from Highway 63 in an area that would not likely be able to gain an additional access. Due to this, the plat will need to show cross easements, which show that those two parcels could be legally accessed from West Ridgeway Avenue. Also wording on regarding those cross easements should be included in the deed of dedication, and we have not gotten the deed of dedication as of yet, so staff would propose that we would not send it to council until we do get that deed of dedication. Staff is recommending approval of the Ridgeway Gulf minor plat as it would be in compliance with the intent of the subdivision ordinance and can be served by the extension of the existing utilities, and the plat is in accordance with the comprehensive plan of future land use map, and then subject to the condition that the deed of dedication state that the two parcels to be created with no street frontage shall have ingress and egress access easements to West Ridgeway Avenue. Questions for staff?
So, this is Thornsberry. You said, I heard you say that the deed hasn't, deed of dedication hasn't been received.
Correct.
So if we take action on this tonight, you're just gonna hold it in abeyance until that comes in and then take it to council?
Right.
Okay. And can you, how long will you hold it?
Well, until, well, I mean, I spoke with the attorney last week, and he's in the process of drawing it up, so I would expect we would have it sometime this week, so, I mean, if anything, it might hold us up from sending it to council for maybe a week or two. So, but I know they're working on it, and they're working on getting us something.
My question's related to the access as well and the, and the need for these easements. Is it, is it because the applicant doesn't want an extra access, or is the city that's, that wouldn't allow a second access more of a question?
Well, the, it was, the cities saw, we saw it when we saw that, when we were reviewing the plat, we noticed that there's an existing parcel that's kind of gonna be floating out in the middle of the golf course, and, and we're just looking in the future as to if something ever happened, say it's not a golf course, and say someone wanted to develop that parcel, they would be completely landlocked. And so the city is looking, you know, towards the future to say, how were, how was someone gonna access this property if something were to ever happen to it in the future? And that's why we want that addressed at this time.
Which I understand, but my question is, are, does, will the city allow us secondary access at any point in the future, or?
Secondary access to where?
From Ridgeway? On Ridgeway.
Yeah. Potentially.
The engineering department would have to review that, but yes. Because the applicant didn't ask for it, you didn't have to, but.
Even if he was asking for it, that, wherever he would be proposing another access to Ridgeway, wouldn't directly provide access to these parcels that would become landlocked back behind.
I understand.
So there would still need to be the cross easements to show that from an existing access or a future access that you could get to these landlocked parcels. Right. And they are proposing a new access with the site plan that we received for the new building. Their access will be on the west side of this plat, so they are showing a new access. They're not gonna use that existing access way to the east, so.
This is Thornsberry again. So with the traffic operations registering their concern, do we just, just say thank you very much, or what other considerations being done with that?
This is Schrader with staff. We have had some conversations with the traffic operations department, both the traffic engineer, Mohammed, and the, the department head, Sandy Greco. At this point, they're just expressing concern. This is a plat, so, you know, the zoning was already put in place, and you really can't, you know, attempt to attach safety studies or safety improvements to a plat. So I, I think at this point, yeah, the approach is the city of Waterloo is gonna have to monitor it. If, if it does appear that there are additional safety concerns starting to develop, the city of Waterloo would likely need to fund a study first and then fund safety improvements. If additional development is proposed that requires additional approvals like rezoning or something of that nature, you know, like a, a new development that would have a significant change of the traffic patterns of the area, as part of a zoning approval of that nature, it certainly can be looked at to require a development to do a traffic impact analysis and sometimes to participate in traffic safety improvements. But when you've got an area that's properly zoned and you're just kind of going through the procedural steps of plating, you can't really attach traffic studies or, or safety improvements to that. So we've had those discussions with the traffic operations.
You can't do it, this is Whitehead, you can't do it with your site plan review in a C2 at the staff level?
No.
Because I know it doesn't come to us.
No, i- if something is a permitted use in a C2 and there's no other approval process is necessary, well, the only exception to that would be as part of new access review, if they're proposing a new driveway, they can review that and, and they could require the traffic study basically and potentially improvements as, depending on the results of that study. But, and there is a new driveway that was part of this proposal, but that had already been reviewed and approved at this point in time.
This is Gustafson. Just from looking at this, it seems like it would make a lot more sense if the developer were, were to set back those three lots and just extend the current access road. Then that way, just like on the other side of the street, we have one access point that provides access for a number of businesses that are located along Marni. It just seems like it would be, make more sense to me anyhow. The one concern that I have is if you go too far to the west with that new access point, you're getting awfully close to that four-lane highway that is gonna have lots of traffic and lots of stopping and going. So I just was wondering if that was at any point part of the discussion. So I just was wondering if that was at any point part of the discussion.
In terms of making it, like changing the plat to where they would be dedicating area out in front to become a public road, no, that was...
Not public.
Okay.
But I'm just saying, an access point.
Right. So...
For those lots.
And I don't think we have the site plan of the proposed development in the packet, but the proposed development essentially does extend that driveway, the existing driveway off of Ridgeway that kind of leads to a parking area in front of the existing development, is essentially be extended to the west in front of the new proposed development and continuing on through to a new driveway to Ridgeway Avenue at the west end. So effectively, it kind of is. You can loop through there, yeah.
All right.
Do we have, excuse me, do we have further discussion?
I move that we approve the request for the Ridgeway Gulf Minor Plat for the following reasons. One, the plat is in compliance with the intent of the subdivision ordinance and can be served by existing utilities. Two, the plat is in accordance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map, which classifies this area as business park. And subject to the following condition, that the deed of dedication state that the two parcels to be created with no street frontage shall have ingress/egress access cross easements to West Ridgeway Avenue.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Motion carries. We now move to the request by Midwest Development for the 22-lot final plat of Audubon Heights Fifth Edition, zoned R1, 1 and 2 family residence district.
This is Miller with staff. This request would create 22 lots for residential development ranging from size of 11,760 square feet to 18,064 square feet. The lots would be required to meet residential standards for drainage. The final plat shows a smaller portion of Track D being reserved for drainage and detention purposes. There is a drain, there is a 20-foot drainage easement between lots nine and 10, and also lots eight and nine. The 22 lots are not within the floodplain area, however, the southeastern corner of Track D is within the 100-year floodplain, and that is also the drainage area. The final plat consists of 22 lots containing approximately 8.14 acres of land, which is located north of West Charles Road and east of Hoff Road. The lots vary in size merging from 11,760 square feet to 18,046 square feet. The street, the street shown as Track A or Partridge Lane will be dedicated to the city for street use upon approval of the final plat. A 30-foot building line is shown in the front of each lot, which is the minimum setback for our one residence district. The access to future development is also shown through Track A located to the southwestern portion of the final plat. The final plat shows a Track D that was plotted in the final plat of Audubon Heights Fourth Edition will be utilized for future development. The final plat shows a plotted building lines, property lines, and dimensions, easements, and right-of-way widths. The applicant also submitted an engineer's certificate of survey and deed of dedication. Staff has noted that an inconsistency between the deed of dedication of the preliminary plat and the final plats of fourth and fifth editions regarding sidewalks. The deed of dedication would need to be corrected on both Audubon Heights Fourth Edition and Audubon Heights Fifth Edition before the plat can go before city council for final approval. Therefore, staff is recommending that the request for final plat of Audubon Heights Fifth Edition be approved for the following reasons. The plat is in accordance with the subdivision ordinance and new, the new addition can be served by existing, extension of existing utilities. And the plat is in accordance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map, which classifies this area as residential. And the plat will create additional infill development sites in the primary growth areas subject to the following condition, that a corrected deed of dedication for Audubon Heights Fourth Edition and Fifth Edition are submitted to the city staff for review before Audubon Heights Fifth Edition is submitted to city council for final approval. And staff has received a copy, a revised copy of the deed of dedication. Currently, we need to have the engineer staff look over that also, but we have received corrections in those deed of dedications already.
Do you have questions for staff? Do we have a discussion amongst the commission?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the final plat of Audubon Heights Fifth Edition with the condition noted by staff.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Motion carries. We have a request by Hammond Hills Development to vacate an existing 10-foot wide utility easement to allow for the construction of a new 12-unit multifamily dwelling located at 3735 Ravenwood Circle.
This is Xandero with staff. This is a request to vacate five-foot utility easements that run parallel to the south lot line of Lot 146 and north lot line of Lot 147 located within Hammond Hills Sixth Edition, which is along Ravenwood Circle, south of Ravenwood Road. However, the west eight feet of the easements will not be vacated, as there is a utility easement that runs parallel to the west lot lines of both lots. There appears to be no utilities located within the easements according to the city records, and the applicant has spoken with Mid-American Energy Company, which noted they have no utilities within the easements, and the purpose of the easements was to allow access to the utilities that are located within the eight-foot easements along the westerly line of both properties. At this time, staff has not heard and is not aware of any other utilities such as telephone or cable located within these easements. Staff is recommending approval of the request to vacate the five-foot utility easements, excluding the west eight feet of each easement located on lots 146 and 147 of Hammond Hills Sixth Edition. Be approved for the following reasons. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on the area. The request would not appear to have a negative impact upon utilities in the area, as there are no known utilities within the easements.
Any questions from the commission for staff? Any discussion amongst ourselves?
I was just out in this area doing some home visits, and they are really doing a nice job on the new buildings that they've put up in that area. I'm very impressed with the developer.
I would entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the request to vacate the five-foot utility easement, excluding the west eight foot of each easement located on lots 146 and 147 of Hammond Hills Sixth Edition, be approved because the request does not have, appeared not to have a negative impact on the surrounding area. And two, it would not have a negative impact upon utilities in the area, as there are no known utilities within the easements.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Motion carries. We have a request by RK Waterloo LLC to vacate an existing 16-foot drainage and utility easement to allow for the construction of a new commercial retail building on the property located at 1921 Hawthorne Avenue.
This is Xandero with staff. This is the request to vacate 16-foot drainage slash utility easement that runs east and west through the middle of the lot located at 1921 Hawthorne Avenue, near the intersection of Hawthorne Avenue and US Highway 218. There are plans to develop this site for a new retail use, and it was determined through site plan review by staff that there is a drainage slash utility easement that runs through the middle of the property. A location of the easement once served as an alley, however, the city vacated and conveyed the alley in August of 1968 to abutting property owners with the condition that the drainage utility easement be retained over the former alley. According to city records, there are no sewer lines or water lines within that easement, and the submitted site plan for the new commercial use also indicates no other utilities as well. There is an overhead electric line that crosses over the easement, but this line is planned to be relocated as a part of the new retail project. Currently, the property owner and Mid-American Energy are working out an agreement for the relocation of that particular line, which serves a billboard to the east. Staff believes vacating the easement would not negatively impact the surrounding area. Staff recommends that the request to vacate the 16-foot drainage slash utility easement located at 1921 Hawthorne Avenue be approved for the following reasons. The request would not appear to have a negative impact upon the surrounding area. The request would not appear to have a negative impact upon drainage in the area. The request would not appear to have a negative impact upon utilities in the area, as there are no known utilities within the easements, and with the condition that the property owner and Mid-American Energy come to an agreement for relocation of that electrical line.
Do we have any questions?
This is Gustafson. Can I just ask, ask for a clarification? At one point, it says it's a 16-foot drainage, and then in another point, it says it's a 15-foot.
It's 16. That was a typo in the recommendations there.
Just wanted to make sure we were all on the same page.
Mr. Vice Chair, I have to abstain from this request due to my involvement in the project.
I would like to move that we go ahead and approve this request to vacate the 16-foot drainage utility easement located at 1921 Hawthorne Avenue, as the request does not seem to have a negative impact on the surrounding area, nor does it have any negative impact upon the drainage in that part of the city.
We added a subject to it.
Oh, and it does not seem to have a negative impact on the utilities in that area.
And number four?
We also added a subject to an agreement with the applicant. He just verbally said it when he gave the staff report.
Sorry.
Because Mid-America, they're planning to relocate an electric line, and Mid-America's fine with that, but they will need an agreement. So we just, Mid-America wanted us to have it subject to that agreement being put in place.
Subject to the agreement with Mid-American Energy.
Second.
So a motion and a second. Any one exception? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Motion carries. A request by Nguyen and Lee LLC for an encroachment agreement to allow for a roof overhang to encroach 4.47, is that right? Into the existing storm sewer easement located at 1931 Sears Street.
This is a request to vacate that particulars, or excuse me, have an encroachment agreement into that particular storm sewer easement. The applicant is in the process of constructing a new restaurant upon the site, and there will be an outdoor patio area on the north side of the building with a roof over, with a roof over it. The northwest part of the roof will encroach 4.47 feet northward and 11.96 feet westward into the storm sewer easement. The architect for the applicant has indicated that the lowest point of the roof overhang will be approximately nine to 10 feet above the grade where it would encroach. Staff believes that the overhang encroachment will have a minimal impact upon the easement and utilities within it, as the easement is quite large in this area, providing additional space to stockpile dirt if the storm sewer is excavated. Staff recommends that the request for an encroachment agreement located at 1931 Sears Street be approved for the following reasons. Request would not appear to have a negative impact upon the surrounding area or utilities within easement, as there will be no structure constructed at the grade within the sewer easement. The lowest point of the roof overhang will be approximately nine to 10 feet above the grade where it would encroach, and with the following condition, that there be assigned and executed encroachment agreement.
Do we have any discussion, questions with staff?
I'll be abstaining on this one, as well as a representative of the buyer.
Do we have any discussion amongst the commission?
I move that we approve the request for the encroachment agreement located at 1931 Sears Street be approved for the following reason, that the request would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding areas or utility within the easement, as there will be no structure constructed at grade within the storm sewer easement. Two, the lowest point of the roof overhang will be approximately nine to 10 feet above grade where it would encroach. And also, subject to the following condition, that there be assigned and executed encroachment agreement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, noting the abstention by Mr. McGee. All in, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Motion carries. Do we have any discussion? Are there any?
I would just like to say, on behalf of myself, I really appreciate the fact that the planning, or the city planner's office paid for our registration fees so we could attend the workshop. It was an excellent workshop. This is my fourth year on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I really learned a lot. So I thank you so much for allowing us to attend.
I'll second that.
Ditto.
You're welcome.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?